We'll call the meeting to order. That's roll call.
Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present.
All right.
No absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any proposed additions or deletions?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you go to the new system for that?
We're on the new system.
Or is that just for roll call?
Not a roll call.
I don't know, I can't see.
It's not a roll call.
Motion approved. That's okay.
It's okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent items. Judy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of May 1st, city council work session minutes of May 8th, police commission minutes of April 21st, planning commission minutes of April 19th, municipal utilities commission minutes of May 8th, the accounts payable report from April 26th through May 9th, consideration of state temporary liquor permits for Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club, and they have two various ones, Civic Center Arena special event by on sale liquor license holder permit for Spurs Corporation, a resolution with the agreement with Riggs Brothers Construction for concrete pad at Sperry Park for the fitness court, and for council's information, the building report for April 2023, and the Wilmer financial reports as of April 30th.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion, discussion? Being done, all those in favor say aye.
That's a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
That's a roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call.
It should be showing up on your screens to do your electronic vote. We have eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passed. We have one individual to speak at the open forum, three minutes.
Come up to the screen.
It's not showing on the screen.
Okay, so let's move to the next one. We're trying to get the vote up on the screen. So for our audience's pleasure here, we are working on our new software system called Civic Plus, and with this system, our votes of all the council, when they are present, we're working that all the votes would come up on the screen electronically, so that everybody would see what that vote count is. So we're working through that right now.
But he's not talking yet. It's supposed to be up there.
You have to get the vote of the agenda up on the screen, otherwise we've got to do a roll call vote by voice.
Now I don't have the roll call.
Just put all. You can electronically put all of them. We're getting close. Thank you for your patience. There you go. So.
Passed.
So in the future, people will be seeing that this and the past eight, zero here, and then you should also see everybody's name. Thank you, Jonah. Appreciate that. Okay. Now we'll move to the open forum.
Here he is. Okay, just add speaker.
Yep. Do you want this?
I don't, I don't know.
Tonight we have Chris Brettfold, who would like to speak during the open forum.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Mayor, city council members, good evening, and thank you for opportunity to speak. Let me start by saying that I support plans for a new city hall. However, I do not support the old J.C. Penney's location. Wilmer 10 and the mall owners rock up capital and visions of revitalized mall where city hall and the community center are the focal point. Who has ever thought to themselves when looking at any mall that what is missing is a government building? I don't think anyone would argue that the mall is experiencing difficult times. The concept of a mall has general, has changed drastically in the past 15 to 20 years. It'll never be as once was. Does Uptown Wilmer need help? Maybe. I say maybe because I am a firm believer that a private business either succeeds or fails based on the products or services they bring. A plan should not be based on the idea that a governmental entity occupying unused retail space. Take a walk through it, it's not good. First off, driving through the parking lot is an absolute nightmare. I would be in more support of converting the large potholes into community swimming areas. If your car survives the gauntlet of holes and the other vehicles doing the same, step into one of the anchor businesses like Kohl's. I love Kohl's, but if it's here in five years, I will be amazed based on the foot traffic I see. I have lived in Wilmer for seven years now, and I have seen nothing done significantly to maintain or update the mall except the name change. From the past proposed agreements I have read about, I would question who is assuming the biggest risk. Not sure what the current proposed lease terms are exactly. Any lease terms that I have read about seem heavily favored towards Rockstep in terms of maintenance. I think a fair question to ask is why the public should invest into a property where the current owners have done little to invest in its own future and to risk tying the heart of the city government into a location that may or may not be solvent in the future. The investment group is asking for investment now, but what do you think they will be asking for if the rest of their plans don't work out? You have a difficult choice to make. The choice has been made even more difficult by local newspapers who seem to be persuaded to publish one-sided news stories in favor of the Penny's location. Don't be fooled by these recent news stories, though. The front page story from a few weeks ago highlighted how Inglewood, Colorado, placed their current city center in an old retail space. I'm glad it worked out for them, but Wilmer is not Inglewood. They have a very large population of surrounding communities to support their stores, and just happen to be right next to Cherry Hills Village, where their homes have the highest median values in the state. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Chris. Next item is a public hearing on Olina Avenue rezoning public hearing. Wesley?
Good evening, council, and tonight we're having the public hearing on the Olina Avenue and area which is rezoning three, nine, 10 parcels or so, and the reason for this rezoning is because there's several areas here that have been R4, and then the R4 zone doesn't allow for the single family to be built. So Planning Commission has approved rezoning this to General Business District that would allow also single-family homes to be considered. So the background here is there's been a trend for the businesses on First Street to request rezones to extend their parking lot in the past, and then they've been granted that extension. And instead of going through that process and spot zoning, staff initiated this rezone to accommodate a request and address an omission from a past amendment to the General Business District. Staff supports the rezone. The single-family houses on Second Street will not be affected, and would be able to rebuild their houses if they ever lose them due to fire or whatever, or want to rebuild there. There was a concern, the Planning Commission of this, that the single-family homes would not be able to be built on Second Street, but that is not the case. The remaining structures are apartments that could be built under the General Business District, so staff does not see the need for an R4 zone or an R2 with the current structures able to be rebuilt and supports the General Business District zoning. This time I will take any questions or public. Maybe you want to hear from the public first before questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, you need to open the public hearing before we have any comments?
All right. We will open the public hearing on the Olina Avenue rezoning. Do we need a motion then?
Not to open. You will, if there, you have to ask for public comment. If nobody's here, then you close the hearing, and then we ask for the action.
Is there anybody here to speak to the rezoning? If not, we'll pull it back to the council. We need a motion to adopt, assign a number, and publish the ordinance.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick note, we do need six affirmative votes on this to pass the ordinance.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the 11 parcels, did they request the rezoning themselves, or the city just decided to rezone it to General Business?
I believe that there was one request to rezone it, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And then you did state that if a house was destroyed, they could build.
Yes. Yes. Single family can be built in General Business District.
Okay. Some lenders will not let them do that?
Oh, I see.
Because of the businesses, and would it be considered legal, non-conforming then? To build a residential?
No, it would be in the General Business District as a permitted use.
So it would say that in our zoning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Butterfield?
So say if somebody bought two of the houses, want to put apartment buildings, what size apartment buildings could they put up there?
Well, that would all depend on the size of the lot that they have. It still would be committed to the same setbacks and such as the General Business District, and it would have to fit our, and so they could combine the lots if they wanted to. We do allow that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I noticed in the Planning Commission minutes that there were two Planning Commission members that voted against it, and that there was discussion. I'm just curious if you have any insight into what their concerns were or why they voted against.
No, I'm sorry, I don't. From my understanding, they were concerned that the single families wouldn't be able to continue.
So any other questions? Otherwise, we need a motion to adopt? Motion, I'm sorry. Thank you. No other questions? Roll call. Thank you.
Everyone should vote on your screen.
Mm-hmm. Do your electronic voting on your screen.
The motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next is the 2023 Annual Stormwater Hearing. Sarah Seitzma?
Hi, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, you would also want to open this hearing?
We'll open the meeting, or the hearing for the annual stormwater.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. So I have the pleasure of presenting the annual stormwater presentation for you all tonight. As part of our coverage under the MPCA's Municipal Stormwater General Permit, we must conduct a public hearing each year to share information about our stormwater pollution prevention program and invite feedback from residents. So tonight, I'll be brief. I brought notes, so I stay on task. I'll start with some general stormwater information. I'll share what the city is doing, and then I'll go into some things that residents can do as well. I have kind of a lot to share because Wilmer's doing a lot of good things. So, Wilmer is considered an MS4 community. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So that means that our storm sewer system and our sanitary or our wastewater system are completely separate. The stormwater system is comprised of the streets, the curbs and gutters, the storm drains, everything that's designed to collect and convey stormwater in our city. What exactly is stormwater, then? So that's just the rain and the snow melt that runs off the impervious surfaces like our rooftops, our driveways, our streets, our parking lots, and runs into our lakes, river streams, and wetlands. It picks up a lot of pollutants on its way to those storm drains, and that is a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight. So many people don't realize that stormwater doesn't go to a treatment facility of any kind before it gets discharged to our lakes or our rivers. The sanitary sewer pipes and the storm sewer pipes share the same space under the ground, but stormwater does not go to our treatment facility. So pollutants that end up on our lawns or our parking lots end up in our stormwater and get discharged to our lakes and our rivers. Stormwater can pick up a lot of pollutants, again, on its way to those storm drains. Chloride is one of the emerging ones, one of the continuing ones that we have our eye on in Minnesota and especially Wilmer. Sediment and nutrients from leaves and grass clippings can also be prolific in stormwater. Chloride pollution mainly comes from road salt, from our winter maintenance practices on our roads, in our parking lots, our driveways, things like that. It can also come from water softeners that most of us have in our homes and our businesses, and then other sources like commercial fertilizer, dust suppressants, things like that. When salt gets into our freshwater system, it harms our aquatic wildlife, and it can get into our drinking water systems too, which is a negative impact. So what is the city doing to mitigate chloride and other stormwater pollutants? So several years ago, the city started converting our plow trucks over from applying granular salt to this brine solution. We save hundreds of tons of salt each, well, not each year collectively, because the brine solution is more effective, and it sticks to the surfaces it's applied to. Also, all of our Public Works operators have done the state's smart salting training, so they have learned how to most efficiently and effectively renew, remove the snow and ice from our parking lots and our streets. Another example of how we are intentionally reducing our chloride pollution is by ensuring that our sand and our salt stockpile is stored on an impervious surface and undercover. So it's not washing away, it's not exposed to the elements, it's not going to get into our groundwater. We also began a public education campaign that shares multiple ways that residents can reduce their salt use without sacrificing safety. Our illicit discharge detection and elimination program continues to help identify and eliminate sources of stormwater pollution throughout the city. So illicit discharges are wastes and wastewater that are not comprised entirely of stormwater, such as the ones listed there. We do occasionally come across people still dumping things directly down a storm drain, mainly because they don't realize, again, that those storm drains don't go to a treatment facility. Our staff is trained every year on illicit discharge so that they can more effectively identify those common illicit discharge sources or occasions, and they can report them so that we can follow up on them. We also smoke test sections of the sanitary and the storm sewer across town every year so that we can identify those cross connections or those illegal connections, and we can get those corrected. And then we also do televising, which can help us identify areas where we most need to do those repairs or replacements of the system. So another part of the city's pollution prevention program is the stormwater control on construction sites. So staff completes plan reviews to ensure that proper and appropriate erosion control practices and sediment control practices are being implemented on construction sites, and then during the active construction, staff completes inspections to make sure those were installed, they were installed correctly, and they're being maintained. Construction activities that disturb an acre or more must also implement practices that pollute or, excuse me, that prevent or reduce water pollution. So permanent practices, whether they're infiltration or stormwater ponds, things like that, and then those owners are responsible for the long-term maintenance of those. So every year, the city undertakes a variety of good housekeeping measures. Most notably is probably our street sweeping. We have two street sweepers that's basically going around town from snow off until snow back on, and they collect thousands of cubic yards of debris every year. So the grass clippings, the sediment, anything that ends up in our streets gets collected and is not discharged into our lakes and rivers. Again, all of our staff are trained for smart salting, and then we also inspect the structural stormwater BMPs that are around the city. So we look at them, we see if they're functioning properly, see if they're being maintained or need maintenance, see if there, if there's any replacing things that need to happen like that. So that's the highlight reel of what the city is doing now into what residents can do. So, I got lots of fun sayings in this one. Keep it green while getting it clean. So if you don't want to take your vehicle to a commercial car wash, which those car washes do discharge their water to the wastewater plant, you prefer not to do that, just wash your vehicle on your lawn instead of your driveway. So then all that water and the detergent and whatever else you're using washes down on your lawn and on your grass and, you know, soaks in instead of just washing down the driveway and washing down those pollutants and anything it might pick up in the street too. Don't leak into the lake. So, a lot of what happens on our streets and parking lots, of course, is oil, antifreeze, things like that, that just drip out of our cars, and the next time it rains, it all washes down into our storm drains again. So keeping up on vehicle maintenance can be helpful, too. Mow green. So leave your grass clippings on your lawn. If you leave your grass clippings on your lawn instead of bagging them and hauling them to the compost site or the brush site, that is equivalent to one application of nitrogen fertilizer every single year. So you'll save yourself some Sunday afternoon work by not having to fertilize as much either. And you also use phosphorus-free fertilizer if you need fertilize, to fertilize your lawn. It's actually illegal in Minnesota to use phosphorus-containing fertilizer on established lawns. Our public education campaign includes those things I just went over again, chloride and salt use, how we can reduce that for homeowners, business owners, without sacrificing safety. It includes tips on pet waste and yard waste, making sure we're disposing of household chemicals appropriately. The, on the right side of the screen is a new thing that we're going to be doing this summer. And so if you guys have been through some of the banks, if you go through the drive-through with your pet, I do, and they hand you a little dog treat, because everybody loves dogs. So we're going to partner with the banks, and we're going to give them this little handout that explains why you would want to pick up after your pets and the dog treats. So we'll hit those people that are going through the banks and educate them where they are. People can follow our city website, our social media sites, so our Public Works Facebook page, our city Facebook page. They can come to the Public Works Annual Open House, which is later this week. Again, we're going to do those dog treat and card handouts at banks. A few more things that we can all do. Don't clutter the gutter. So if you keep your leaves and your grass, grass clippings and your trash and everything else out of the gutter, so it doesn't wash away in the storm. You can also go online to the Adopt a Storm Drain program, and you can literally adopt the storm drain that's on your block or near your house. And so spend five minutes, a couple times a month, just clearing out whatever trash might be there, whatever leaves might collect, things like that. So again, it doesn't wash down into our storm drains. Another easy one is to use a rain barrel. So we've got the rain barrel program, which I'll talk about in a minute here, that you can get rain barrels from the city. If you don't want a rain barrel, if you don't need it for any reason, you don't have a garden or flowers or whatever you might use that water for, you can easily direct your downspouts off your driveway onto your lawn so that that water can soak through that lawn again, or at least slow down while it's going across your lawn before it hits our streets. Picking up pet waste. So the city supplies those dog waste bags and the receptacles at the dog park, but picking up your pet waste when you're on city property, whether that's at the dog park or other city properties, is of course required now. And then for winter maintenance, the shovel select scatter and sweep method, so if you can shovel off this, as much snow as possible, is best first, and then select the right de-icer for the conditions. So most of So most of us are using whatever common salt mix we get out of the hardware store. Typically, that one doesn't work in temperatures lower than 15 degrees. Most people don't know that. It doesn't work, they dump more on, they're still mad. It's not going to work, so put some sand down or wait until it warms up. Scatter it. We don't need nearly as much salt as we think we need, so use it sparingly. And then just sweep up the excess and use it for the next storm. Again, our rain barrel program. So we've been partnering with a couple other cities for the last three or four years now and ordering a semi-load of rain barrels. And so we got our order a couple weeks ago for the city of Wilmer. This year again, they're $68 each, they're available to Wilmer residents. There's a limit of four per household. I will say I only have 11 that are not spoken for. So if people want them, they better call me quickly. I can put their name down for next year's order too, though. That's all my contact information. Again, this presentation will be on the city website at some point. My contact information is also always on the city website. So, if you have any questions or comments or feedback, I will welcome that. And this, again, if people are watching this at home or watching this later, that's all of our contact information if they have questions as well.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Sarah? Mike?
We've talked a little bit before, Lakes Association, Wilmer Lakes Association. We talked about rerouting some of that stormwater into some wetlands. Is there a program, is there grants available for things like that?
That's a great question. I don't know specifically, but my guess would be yes, likely. So typically, watershed districts or county SWCDs typically have grants from the state or even the federal government that can help cost-share on water quality projects. I don't know for sure that the ones in our area have it, but historically they have, so.
Okay. Any other question? Carl?
I'd just like to give a shout out to Public Works and Gary, the job they do. You know, you go to a lot of cities and the roads are white from salt. And you just, you don't see that here, and so that's, that's appreciated.
They were, they were doing a great job before the smart salting training. They enthusiastically implemented some of the things they learned in that training, and I couldn't agree more. They do a great job, and we don't sacrifice, you know, quality or safety for that either.
Anybody else? All right, we need a motion to receive the annual stormwater presentation.
Need to close the hearing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Close the hearing, and then take the motion.
Mayor, this is a public hearing, so you should first see if anyone in the audience would like to address the council on this issue.
All right. Okay, I wasn't trying to skip. Anybody want to speak to the stormwater permitting? If not, I'll close the hearing and look for a motion to receive the annual stormwater presentation for MS4.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion. All right, let's vote. That's a roll call vote.
We're just waiting on one vote.
The motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. We're going to regular business. First, regular business, our city administrator is going to introduce our action for a city finance director.
Yes. Good evening, council. We have, mid-March, our finance director, Steve Okens, did retire, announced his retirement, and so we started our search for our next finance director. And we had total of three applicants, which, after talking to several people in the business, had said we were very fortunate to even get three qualified, very qualified applicants. So we were happy about that. But I'd like to, tonight, we offer the recommendation to hire Mr. Tom Odens. And we're very excited. Tom comes with a great professional background with the county. He's very professional and engaged in the county, in the city also. Longtime resident, so we're very happy that Tom has accepted our offer. And I will let you speak to Tom, ask any questions you'd like.
Welcome, Tom, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's funny, in 1996, a job opportunity is what brought my family to Wilmer, with the city of Wilmer. So it's kind of coming full circle for me. So I'm excited to take my nearly 10 years of government experience and investments in work for my hometown. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity, so it'd be an honor.
I remember when you came to town. Your father was very young. A very young man, served the community well. Any questions for Tom? Rick?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, welcome. I know you'll do a great job, and you probably have some pull with the county too, so.
Yes, thank you, I will maintain those contacts.
Welcome aboard, thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Tom? We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the hiring of Tom Odens for finance director. And that's a motion, so we still vote on here, though, don't we?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. We should have music background.
I can throw out some attaboys while we're waiting. It's just dead space, you guys. Okay. So, the first one, we, let's shout out to utilities. What was in our packet in the consent agenda was they received the RP3 Diamond Level designation from the American Public Power Association. Diamond Level is the highest award that is given, and they give these out every three years. And only 271 of the more than 2,000 public utilities nationwide receive an RP3 award, and that's at any one of the three levels, the gold, the platinum, or the diamond. And this is the third time that Wilmer Public Utilities has received the Diamond Level in the last nine years. Huge kudos to them, and they deserve to be recognized for doing a really good job.
Attaboy one.
Are we up and running yet? Nope. Want another one?
Should.
Okay. Just shout out to the police department. And just to be thinking about all the law enforcement that, given the four officer deaths that have happened over the last month. But Wilmer had a hand in the Pope County officer that was killed, Deputy Josh Owens. Chief Felt has been a member of the Law Enforcement Memorial Association for many years, and now he is the vice president. So he is involved in every officer funeral that takes place in the state. And we also, the public should know that we sent four Wilmer police officers up to Pope County to help them for their coverage while they dealt with the loss of Deputy Josh Owens. So kudos to the police department.
Then we all say hi.
Want me to tap dance anymore? Give one more kudos. Fire Department and the utilities for Friday's chlorine leak and how quickly they responded to that. Didn't have not, did not have any incidences also on Friday with that chlorine leak on County Road 5. So they did two great jobs.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
On Thursday at 4 o'clock, we're going to have open house on the Public Works Garage. We've had this, I think, I don't know, five, six years running. And I think the kids and grand, a lot of grandkids and parents come, and we display various pieces of equipment. That's a chance for kids to crawl on, crawl in, honk horns, ask questions. And we're going to have treats, little refreshments, and it's always turned out to be a good time, so. Come take a look and see what this stuff is that you're seeing going on the streets.
Thursday, the 18th, at 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, yep. Go tell the last person leave, but how do I say?
I think we should move to a voice vote, voice motion, please.
Okay, we're just going to do a voice motion, so we're waiting on Councilmember O'Brien. So, your vote, please.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Pass. Welcome. Welcome, Tom. Welcome, Tom. We have Wilmer 10 City Hall Community Center presentation, Dionne. Dionne and Kelly.
All right, we're going to see if we can mess up technology here a little bit more by changing the input. Maybe not. Oh, there we go. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and members and staff. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to present our concept for the City Hall and Community Center at the J.C. Penney's location in the Uptown Wilmer Mall. I must say, first off, that I agree to some regards with Councilmember Butterfield's comment from our last council meeting that we were at, that it could be a little awkward for us to be presenting to you prior to and during you having paid council working on another plan for the same location. So it is a little awkward for us to be standing here before you, presenting while someone else is working on the same design for the same property. Back at, historically, you know that we first approached this subject in 2020. And at that time, in 2020, the city knew that their city council, not city council, the city hall was in desperate need of repair or replacement. The city was also under the impression, and we were under the impression, that the city couldn't afford to do a lot at that time. So when we took a look at the J.C. Penney's location at that time, we were looking at it as conservatively as we possibly could to be as fiscally responsible for the city and get them into a city hall community center as economically as possible. Two, two and a half years later now, it appears that things have changed a little bit, and you're looking more long-term, bigger picture. So we have revisited it, the project, with a little different lens, trying to look at the design and everything towards long-range, long-term, great facility with, and I think you've seen in your packet, the design is significantly different than what we were presenting in 2020. So given that, let's start with the site plan. And what I have shown here is the, the entire Uptown Wilmer location. You can see the entire mall area. Can you see my pointer? Yeah, sort of. So the existing mall area, the, the highlighted area here is the redevelopment for the City Hall and Community Center. The lot, this line right here across the, the kind of darker gray structure there, if you take that straight across, that is approximately where that property line of the city would be. So we're actually repaving, resurfacing, and redoing a little more than what is just the city property to get back, to make it look like it's a contiguous, redone site. Down here in the lower left corner, I'll blow that up a little bit more so that you can see. This lower left corner here, that's the, the community garden for the community center. You can see that we're adding a lot of green space throughout the parking lot. The, these circle drives are pervious pavers. So a lot of this site design is done, it's, it's great that we just had a stormwater presentation prior to this, because a big part of this project does relate to stormwater as it relates to not only the city hall, what would be the city hall, the formerly J.C. Penney site, but also the entire mall property. And we'll get into that a little bit further down the road. But on the city hall site here, we would have, as I mentioned, green space. We'd be putting buffers between what would be the, the city property and the Uptown Wilmer property. Be rain gardens associated with it. Some, like I said, impervious paver areas so that we're filtering some of that runoff. And the rain gardens serve as that filtering as well. These tree wells or, or tree buffers also take in some of that water before it leaves the site, so that it's not all discharging at the same time. You can see we've got a lot of circular areas on here to, to really kind of buffer the box of what the J.C. Penney's location has been in the past. So we're really softening the design, the overall site design with those different angles and, and circular motions. If we go to the view from, this would be from, towards the corner of Walmart. So from 19th Avenue and 5th Street, this would be the, the corner view of the property. You have all the other views there as well. A lot of circulation, pedestrian space throughout. Benches built into the, into the area. There would be a drop-off area for the community center undercover there. When we, when I was here last time, there was a lot of discussion about the structure itself and, and the structure of a building that was built in 1980 approximately. I know that the city did a structural review. We've done our own structural review, I'm sure that, I haven't seen the results of, of your review, but I'm, I'm sure that they coincide with ours. The building is, is ex- The building is extremely sound and in great condition. It has precast wall panels that have not seen any corrosion anywhere. The structural steel superstructure is in great shape. We would be putting an entirely new roof on the building. And that relates to structure as well because the existing roof that's on there is a ballasted EPDM roof. And back in the 80s, when we were doing ballasted EPDM roofs, we put 10 pounds of rock on top of the roof membrane. So there is 10 pounds per square foot for 52,000 square feet. There's 520,000 pounds of rock on top of that building that will all come off when we re-roof the building because we don't put ballast on top of membrane roofs anymore. So that actually improves the structure from what has been there in the past. We'd be cutting windows into the precast wall structures, very similar to what you have seen at the Cashwise Liquor, the new Cashwise Liquor. They cut windows into, it's basically the same precast wall panels that are on the old Cashwise building as is in the J.C. Penney's building. So we'd be cutting those windows in to provide the natural light into the building. Again, entirely new roof system, new HVAC system throughout. You would end up with a brand-new building inside the existing superstructure that's there.
Kelly, I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
When you talk about a new roof on the building.
Mm-hmm.
Does that take it all the way down to the gridders so it'd be open?
No. No, we would take the existing roof membrane off.
Okay.
We would probably, we would be adding some insulation on top of the existing insulation that's there. If there's wet insulation, when we take that off, we'd be taking that wet insulation out and replacing that with new insulation. And then the new roof membrane would go over the top of that.
Okay. All right.
So the existing insulation would stay on top of the, the structure is a bar Joyce and metal deck, and then there's insulation on top of that. And that insulation would stay along with additional insulation on top of that.
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Yeah. Feel free to ask any questions whenever so that you don't forget them when we're all I spoke earlier about the site drainage and the presentation that you had before we, as that relates to the entire mall parking lot. Rockstep Capital has engaged the services of an engineer out of Bloomington to do a study on the entire mall parking lot and to apply for grants. There, it came up, asking the question if there's state grants. There are state grants available to help with sites like the Uptown Wilmer site, which was highlighted. Dionne has a little bit more information on that, but the Uptown Wilmer location was highlighted in the Star Tribune, I think, as one of those malls that have actually not helped, but had an impact on the impaired waterways that we have. And there are impaired waterways downstream from Grass Lake. So we have met Margaret Johnson from the Kennewah County Soil and Water Conservation District is involved in that project with Rockstep Capital. And if the city does go with the J.C. Penney's location, the Rockstep Capital has agreed to put up to $500,000 into parking lot improvements, which would primarily be towards stormwater and drainage runoff, which would be, include a lot of mostly repaving. That $500,000 is only 25%. There's grants for 75% of the total project. So it'd be up to a $2 million project on, outside of the J.C. Penney's site for improvements to the parking lot. And that would end up being rain gardens. So we would get rid of a fair amount of the asphalt with rain gardens, tree wells. We learned something at that meeting with, it was Bar Engineering in Bloomington. But the main design force behind these projects is you want to take the first inch of water from a rainfall and put that into rain gardens or something that deters that because that's what flushes everything off. And then beyond that, the water that's coming off is not nearly as contaminated.
Stormwater detention and retention.
Detention, retention, but you want that first inch to flush off and be able to soak in. And then beyond that, things are designed so that then it can go into the waterways. And Margaret Johnson is very, very excited about this project. She feels it would have a huge impact on the impaired waterways that are downstream from Grass Lake. From that, I'll turn it over to the banker. They like to talk about money.
Thanks, Kelly. I appreciate that, council and Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity again to come before you. Before I get started, I want to make one, a couple of comments. One, we were here about 60 days ago, and at that time, and Kelly touched on this a little bit, we were thinking that we'd probably come in around $15 million. After we saw the designs that you were looking at before and the impact that the city wanted to make with a new City Hall and a community center, Tuister Construction and Kelly's architects at his firm spent one whole, over a day just brainstorming or throwing stuff up on the wall, and this is what we came up with. So I admit to you that our plan from two and a half years ago basically still looked like J.C. Penney with maybe a nicer door in the front. So it is, so I'm glad and I applaud the council for 60 days ago because it was good governance on your part to not vote that night and wait the 60 days. So we had a chance because we really didn't know what this would come in at price-wise until we took the time to design it, probably making it more of a, we think, an everlasting building for the city of Wilmer. So I'm glad you did that. I'm glad that you gave us an extra 60 days to give us a good time, enough, excuse me, enough time to present a project that looks probably more similar to the ones that you've seen in the BKB drawings the last several months. So I appreciate that. One of the things you'll notice here is that they did a great job of just softening up that whole, that whole building and making it much more pleasant, eye-paling, and have much more curb appeal. On the one page of that, you'll see the front door of the City Hall faces east, and it looks like there's only about three or four parking lots, parking spots there. The east door, that's the door where you're going to come into your city business. We're going to actually make more parking spots there. We just didn't have time once we got this one done to revamp that. So on that east-facing wall, which would be...
This parking area here needs to be expanded because the, the design intent of this particular design is that the daily visitors to the city would be parking on that east side. So we understand that we need to have more parking than that shown on that east side.
When you look in the north side, the north side would be the employee entrance, and the curved road there just softens up the, it cuts down on traffic flying through there fast. And when we visited the site with Gary Manzer and with Leslie and some other people from the city, they reminded us that we need to keep an open lane there for fire trucks and stuff, and that's where our fire hydrants are, in that lane. So as you go to the north, that's where you see city employee parking. And then to the south, the dark area, that's all the parking that we would use for the community center. Of course, we would have cross-drive and cross-parking easements with Rockstep. So if there's a huge event at the City Hall, at the community center, you can obviously park further to the south, more in front of Kohl's. So I just want to give you a quick little idea about how I see the design meeting the needs of the city. That garden, I'm not sure how much bigger that garden is than the one that's currently at the community center, but I would say three times, I would guess. So we'll have water brought out to that. So you'll have water out there. We'll just bring a hydrant out through the, before we do read through the parking lot, and we'll put that hydrant out there. The parking lot and the gentleman that talked earlier during the public comment, I could not agree more with the parking lot situation there. I drive a Suburban, as maybe you know, and I carefully drive through that parking lot or try to avoid it when I can myself. I can't imagine a, don't take your Corvette through there, please. So the, what we're talking about, the parking lot, so Tim Jackson, the manager of the mall, and then the manager of the Virginia mall that is also by Rockstep, Kelly and I, Margaret Johnson, all met in Bloomington about three weeks ago. And I just want to let you know what the impact of this is. Even to get into the ballgame or get your ticket to the prom and this deal to get a chance to get those grants, it's a $52,000 basically fee. So you have to have an engineer design the new rain garden feature and how this, all this water runs off of this. And Margaret Johnson from the Kennewah County Soil and Water, they are so excited about this project. And again, it was July of 2022. There's an article in the Minneapolis Star Tribune Sunday paper. I'm reading it before I'm heading to church, and I'm looking, oh my goodness, they cite the Uptown Wilmer Mall as one of the worst places where water just runs off that parking lot and heads to Grass Lake. So I called up Tim and talked to Tim and then Andy Weiner, and they got the ball rolling with the Bar Engineering and with Margaret. Margaret's so excited about this that Kennewah County Soil and Water is paying almost half of the fee to get that study done, with Rockstep paying the other half. What Kelly has told and what Andy and I have talked about, and Andy Weiner had told me that once we buy, pay for the project here, he's committed $500,000 to a $2 million project for that parking lot. That may not get it all paved, but what the thing is with rainwater is you have to have good, solid, smooth asphalt to get the water to those rain gardens and to those tree lines. So there will be paving involved in that. So that's not just $2 million of trees and grass. In fact, they don't even want grass. They want more absorbent things like these rain garden situations. So that probably won't do the whole parking lot. So if you're listening right now to me or you're watching on television and you think there'll be a new parking lot here like next week, that's not the case. It's a long process. This wouldn't happen until 2024. However, Andy wanted me to relay to you that they would work on the Kohl's area, the area south, and kind of wrap around in front of Harbor Freight and get as much asphalt they can do into that project along with the whole rainwater feature.
Right now, we've got 10,000 stormwater detention.
Yeah. Not very effective ones, though.
So that's just some of the things that maybe that Kelly didn't talk about, but I just wanted to kind of the background story of what we're, what we're trying to do here. We think this is an opportunity, obviously, not only to beautify this part of the city, but also to drive some economic development. And I know that we've heard a lot of questions about, oh, the building's 40 or 50 years old and the roof, you know, is bad and all that. But I just want to remind you once again, so for the third time, it's going to have a new roof. You're going to have new HVAC units. You're going to have a brand-new parking lot. There's going to be windows cut into those walls. I know Leslie has a question for us, how many windows? And I forgot to ask Kelly to figure that out. But so Kelly knows the people that built, that make these concrete walls. So he called them and said, how big a window can I put in them? So I know there's a lot of people that may be armchair engineers, but we actually are figuring that out to make sure that this does work. So at the end of all this, we come up with a price range from low to high, as you have in your packets. And I did mirror this after the BKB presentation from 80 days ago, where they laid out in that big packet when Bruce was there about, you know, what the building costs and some site development costs, design and construction contingency, soft costs, and total project cost. So we have a range here of about $2.5 million, from $18,205 to $20,705,000. And I did, we did note that we don't have the furniture and technology into that. Part of the reason that we don't have furniture in there is that you're probably better off getting your furniture rather than having us do that for you and then have any, just a straight deal, deal with the supplier yourselves, the city can do that. And technology, we didn't know what you actually needed. We have not had the opportunity to spend time with city staff to find out exactly how, what is needed on the inside of the building. We do have, two years ago, we put together a sketch, and I think probably the only person that saw that was former mayor Calvin. But in a meeting like this, we don't want to throw up an office diagram on here and have someone say, oh, that, I can't be in that office, so that isn't big enough for me. The number here is pretty much going to cover what it takes to build out the inside of a 52,000-square-foot building. Basically, there's cost estimators that architects use to do that kind of thing. So that's how we came up with that number. Are there any additional questions for us at this time or anything that we didn't cover that maybe you thought we should have?
Thank you. Thank you. Would you just go back to the parking lot?
Yep.
I drove through there again today, thinking about it. And who owns the parking lot?
So if this project is successful and you decide to do this, everything that you see black there will be owned by the city. So it'll be owned first by Wilmer 10 as we work on it, and then they'll be sold to the city.
Okay. So this is the entrance into the mall. And so there are people that park where you have the black going up to the building. There are all doors there that go into the mall, and there are people who park back there. There's the, where the semis would go down in there, and there's more doors back in that direction. So what happens with access to that? And then on the other side, your parking lot's going all the way up to the mall, and so there's an entrance there to go into that end of the mall. And then there's other entrances there. So how does that work?
So what, Councilperson Nelson, like what, can you tell me what you mean by how does that work as far as people accessing that through that?
So if only, if this is city parking lot, then nobody else is going to park in there other than the city.
So...
So how do, how do they get into the mall if this is just the city's parking lot?
So there'll be a cross easement with Rockstep and the city because obvious, this, we have this in some other properties where we have like 30 parking spots that are identified for our tenants, but because it's next to like Cashwise Grocery Store, we know that we can't control where people drive and park. So there'll be cross easements for both parking and for access. The idea with those tree lines that run east and west at the edges, kind of identify the people that this is not normal mall parking, yet we want to be able to park, have you be able to have people park on like the Kohl's parking lot if you have a big event at the community center. So it's common, when neighbors have commercial properties common next to each other, typically there's easement agreements so we can drive across each other's property. There's also some cross-parking agreements if you need to have that.
So it is basically open, I mean, it's black, but it's basically open up against the building for anybody to come in.
Right. Yep. So Audrey, you're right on that. West of the entrance there for the community center, that's that one entrance would go into where the Herberger's Home Store would be.
Yep.
So that would be new sidewalk there and new entrance coming in there, but anyone could walk in there and to have access into the mall. And just like we'll have, the door will remain open from the Penny's Common Wall back into the mall. So it allows easy access for people to do their walking while they're there. There'll be security doors, you know, closed when it's not open anymore, but there'll be an opportunity for people to come in. Say you're in the mall shopping, but you want to walk into the City Hall to visit someone's City Hall, you can come in from the mall side as well.
Probably have everybody parking on the city property.
Um...
Trying to avoid alignment.
So Mayor Reese, you make a good point. So the thought would be that everybody will park on your parking lot because it's brand-new. But so this, by the time this project is done, the other project with the whole mall parking lot should be done as well. Because both of these, if you look at our timeline for our project, we'll probably be turning this over to you in like December of '24. And so the project for the whole mall parking lot will be done in the summer of '24. And I'll just, and most of the focus for Rockstep is, according to Andy, is going to be not the Herberger's area, but everything to the south and east and west of that, other than drive lanes.
Tom?
Well, that hasn't been brought up yet. Gary found a map with the sewer lines going underneath J.C. Penney's. How would that come into play with building this out now?
The sewer line, the main sewer line runs across the, what would, the west... The sewer line, the main sewer line runs across the, what would, the west wall of the JCPenney's locations, we'd be tying into that sewer line with any sewer requirements within the building.
So that would be from the mall be getting access into the sewer zone?
The, the map that I saw, that, that sewer line goes actually within the, the mall or the, the JCPenney's wall. It hasn't been identified exactly where that sewer line is.
Gary, do you happen to know where exactly that sewer line would be on there?
All I have is what, what we have on our map. We have sewer maps to detect the city. So we've got a sketch of the, or we've got a map of the mall property I've got it. Probably exactly.
So runs right, right underneath the building there.
Right.
Yep, kind of along the edge of the mall.
Oh, on the, or, or south?
Yeah, that's just, we have that.
It's north, south there, yeah.
Yeah.
So what's.
That was a good thing when I found that. Now the exact location, until you find it, you don't know the exact location. You know approximately where it is.
So that'll be replaced too then at this?
We'd be tying into it.
Yeah. So what's your question about, I don't, Tom, what's your?
Well, I didn't know if it was, I just heard that, you know, Gary said it was underneath JCPenney. So I didn't know, you know, everything from the mall was going to be falling through the city.
Well, actually, when we found that, I, I, I found that to be a really good thing because we knew, at least we knew where we had sewer line. Because when you look at the JCPenney's existing floor plan, the only sewer needs or requirements that are in that building are mostly towards the north, the north wall and the northeast corner. So and we're going to have sewer needs, I'm sure, on the south side of the building and the community center. So it was, it was good to know that we had.
So that line will, it'll all fit right in with your project.
Yeah, yeah.
We deterred one bit.
Yes.
So in the other properties that we own, Tom, the sewer line typically runs like on the back, 16 feet off the wall or whatever, saw our tenants tie into that. Kind of the same concept here. But so there's going to be plumbing needs, of course, in the floor that, for example, on the south side where the dressing rooms for JCPenney, maybe they'll end up being restrooms there once we get the final interior design done.
So we chopping up floor, cutting trenches in the floor to run sewer lines throughout the building to, to where we need them.
Councilmember O'Brien.
You're talking about the parking lots, repair or replace. I looked at some of the work you guys did at Coles, I wasn't very impressed. That stuff was falling apart already.
Well.
First off, we didn't do that.
So there seems to be a misconception that, that Wilmer 10 owns the, Uptown Wilmer. And I've said this 100 times publicly, and I'll say it once more. We do not own, Wilmer 10 does not own Rockstep. Rockstep is a company in Houston that owns the Uptown Wilmer Mall. All 48 acres or whatever it is, okay? So Mr. O'Brien, we didn't repair the, the, the Coles parking lot. We had nothing to do with that. So in this project, you're getting that parking lot that you see that's black, you'll drive by there probably next summer and you'll see that's all tore up and it's gravel. And it's all tore out of there. Any curb stuff they have, it's, it's a brand new fresh slate and we'll redo it to look like this.
So you're going to tear out the old black tub and restructure, put in class five or whatever.
Yes, yeah.
One of our, yeah, one of our concerns is that, you know, there's a lot of bad spots there.
Right.
And so when we tear that all out, you know, how bad is that sink hole? I mean, is it really super soft? You know, the hope is that we can take off the top layers, get it leveled out, bring in more under, more gravel, et cetera, and then repave the whole thing brand new. And that's what's figured into the.
It is, it is, it is a little bit of an unknown. We don't know exactly what we're going to run into when we, when we do that. One, the one thought that I've had, you know, with all of the discussion about the mall parking lot, mall parking lot is 50 years old and it hasn't been maintained. What would happen to a city street if we didn't maintain a city street for 50 years? We'd, we'd have a mess. So it's kind of the same situation we, we've, the mall has gotten into that state of disrepair that, you know, if we don't maintain the streets, it costs more. They've gotten into that position where it's going to cost more than maintaining would have cost.
Was that Rockstep's responsibility to maintain that in the last 50 years?
Well, it would have been Rockstep's responsibility since 2015. And then before that, the mall was owned by a gentleman out of Colorado, and before that, I'm not sure. So this is, this, the, I've lived here for 30 years and I know that we're on the third owner. I don't know what happened in the 70s and 80s. But that would have been their responsibility all those years. In fact, I think that, I saw a notice that was sent out by the city last week that they're working on redoing the parking requirements for that central business that, South, South First Street, which would be a, a help to this property. Because I think that the better idea would be to tear up some of the asphalt and just have grass, you know, curb grass, put some trees in there, soften the look of it. Again, I can't control how the mall owner does the rest of it. But I think that the fact that we've got a county soil and water fired up about getting this done, I think that's going to go a long ways to making it look a lot better than you see it today.
Yeah, your, your, your text amendment to, to modify the parking requirements will be a great help to projects like this. You know, that, that immense parking lot transpired by the parking ordinance of the ti, at the time, that X number of square feet of retail required X number of parking stalls. I don't, I've been here, the whole time that mall's been here, I've never seen that parking lot full. Not even close. So at that point, then you get to the, you know, the, the requirement by the owner of a property to maintain a parking lot that 25% of it only ever gets used.
I think you'll, you know, I guess, I mean, I can't predict the future on that. But I think once you get right size and the parking requirements, you're going to see people take better care of their lots because they're going to take some of those lots and they're going to trim the grass and mow them and also then drop their snow on there in the winter time. And because I know that everyone is concerned about Uptown Wilmer, but this past winter was horrible for parking lots. So I cannot find a parking lot at a retail place in town that I think survived this winter. But, and you probably realize that too as you drive around town.
Councilmember Davis.
So will the parking lot be fixed with the soil and water? With Candy Ojai County Soil and Water, the $2 million project? Will that still happen regardless of our project?
That's a good question. So this project will be totally done within these dollars you see here. But Vicky, that project, so what Andy Weiner told me to express to you tonight, because he's not here, is that he's taking $500,000 of the money that we pay him for this building and put towards that $2 million project and try to stretch that as far as it goes. So he wanted to make sure, I say that, I can't do the whole parking lot for $2 million, but I, I know he's focused on the area by Coles and the area by the strip mall to the south and then around the front, up in front like the movie theater and that, that spot. So it all depends on how Barr designs it. So they're spending quite a bit of money with these engineers to design this project. Margaret Johnson's pretty confident that she will be able to find different pots of money that those grants come from to, to, to get a bigger project they can afford to have done to help the look, soften look and also with the stormwater runoff.
Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, because it, it is, the, the, that $2 million project is contingent on this project.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. And I still have one more question on the parking lot. Where that semi ramp is, that was the, that was the delivery to JCPenney, correct?
That, that actually would be city property.
Okay, so it could be removed?
It could be, yep.
And, because there's big doors and.
Mm-hmm.
And during the winter, there was all sorts of snow and stuff down in there that wasn't being used. But there are some other doors back in there along, you know, along that wall and for businesses the other direction. So just, just still concerned about traffic coming through this parking lot and how people will get in and out if they want to, you know, go to those locations back there. Or that last, the last door that goes in there.
You know, that, that loading dock, it, it had been intended that that would be a part of the city property. It wouldn't necessarily have to be. There is no use for that. That was 100% JCPenney's loading dock. I understand the city doesn't have a need for a loading dock at the city hall. So that space could be turned into mechanical space. It could be turned into something else, the loading docks could be removed. And just to clarify on that, that the property line would not be all the way to the top of the page there, the black. The property line would be more a straight line across from the building. And again, that cross parking, cross parking and cross drive easement is a very common occurrence in commercial properties where you have connected parking lots and driveways.
And I think the other thing too, Audrey, is one of the reasons that we kind of curbed it this way and made those bump outs in the, in the parking is to discourage people from driving through there. Because if, so if you want to go to the, the door that where the Lewin Radio Station is, to drive through the city property, you're going to have to make about six or seven moves to get through all that stuff. And where people will just go into the big parking lot and drive over there. So that's, that's our goal. Is to just discourage people from even coming in there unless you have business there.
So Deion, at the beginning, you said it'd be 18?
Yeah, 18.2, round numbers, Mayor Reese, 18.2 to 20.7.
Okay, and that's without saw, any soft costs? No tech, no soft?
That, that's right, that's.
It does, it does have soft costs. It does not have technology, furniture, furnishings and security. So all other building components, carpet, wall coverings, cabinetry, kitchen equipment, everything else is included in that.
I just want to be able to make a fair comparison between the two.
Yeah, we, exactly, we do too. We didn't figure in, like Kelly said, and I don't know if, if the numbers you're going to get from BKV is going to have furniture and technology and they're, they're probably going to have security. We don't have security in this right now.
All right, any other questions?
Well, gentlemen, I appreciate your hard work and coming back to us. We will get back to you. We will be listening to what Bruce has for us later on and want to make some fair comparisons so that we know what exactly it will be.
Very good, we thank you for the opportunity. Is, is BKV presenting tonight?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll see if we can make technology work again.
I didn't know we were closing, closing there, even though, I guess I just, I wanted to comment that I'm glad you had the opportunity to do something that was more architecturally appealing. I really, I really like the design. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that the, the community garden got a space. Because initially, we were talking like that was going to go across the street. This would be much safer, they can go there, go into the community center. Well, I, I was really glad to see you were able to do that. Good job.
Yeah, and tying in again to the presentation earlier, we could actually put rain collection off on the roof to tie into that community garden so that we don't have to use city water.
All right, well, we receive it for information.
No, Justin, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm wondering about, it's probably a question more for staff, but it was mentioned, the city, the city's structural review, has that been completed?
Yes, it has.
Anything you can share with us from that?
No, not right at this time, because I don't recall what it is. But I don't think there was anything that was outstanding on it by any means. But the city, you will be getting that, I figured that we would do that at the same time, that you would kind of put, pull everything together all at once.
Okay, and what is the process? When is that happening? Is there a calendar or a schedule for what's kind of next in this?
Yeah, that's why I'd asked earlier about June. Because Mr. Schwartzman is here and he's been in the process of working up his information on this also. He can probably give you some highlights right now if you want. But otherwise, I thought that we would do that just as a workshop type thing because this is a very large topic instead of just, you know, having it at a council meeting. Because we have a lot that's coming up in June also. So I thought we would just have it as a workshop probably on that June 12th date that we've got scheduled for a workshop.
So Bruce, did you want?
So a little odd, maybe, speaking, I just want to reinforce what these gentlemen said. Our cursory review of the structure, hi, I'm Bruce Schwartzman, BKV Mayor, Council, good to see you all again. Our cursory review, it's a solid structure. It's just a question of what the city wants to do with it. But it's, it's going to stand for quite a while and it's going to, it's a solid structure. So we've walked around, we looked at the roof. I think the balish was taken off, so it's clear roof. I don't think it has that stone on it anymore. But anyway, it's a good solid structure, just that. In the study we're going to show you, one of the things with the building, I knocked it off track with some of this.
I think you need to go to the microphone.
Oops, yes, sorry.
Sorry.
So the space programming we did for all of you a while ago showed a 60,000 square foot building to meet all of the needs for the community center as well as the city hall. And again, you're looking long term. You don't get the opportunity to do this kind of project often, and you want to do it right. So what we're going to show is the opportunity to do a small addition to the building as well. Because the 52,000 square feet is almost too big, it's definitely too big for the city hall and it's too big for the community center. So it almost has to be the both of them to make it work. But we'll bring some of the information, some of the additional analysis we're looking at.
I don't know if I'm asking this right, Bruce, but if, if, if we want to look at soft costs so that we have a clear comparison, are we able to get?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, we, we, we've done, you know, BKV is a 44-year-old firm in the state. And we've done hundreds of city halls and a lot of community centers as well. And so we've got a lot of data. Matter of fact, we're in the process of doing a project for Chan Hassen right now in their community center as well. And so we've got a data, a lot of data on the types of AV systems, security systems, things like this. And based on the size of the building, we would, we'd be able to put that together.
Okay.
So we'll provide a little more detail to help you explain some of that as well.
All right, and, and we'll be looking at that in June. Okay, all right.
Sorry, gentlemen, I didn't mean to take over for you, but I just want to answer that structural question, is a solid building, it's solid.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deion and Kelly.
Just, yeah, thank you. I'm wondering, as we're trying to compare, you know, apples to apples, right? As you've talked about, BKV just mentioning that, you know, that here's an, an 8,000 square feet addition. Is there an opportunity then after we've reviewed BKV that Wilmer 10 would be then able to make alterations to their proposal? It seems somewhat odd to me that Wilmer 10's proposal, including the cost of it all, comes very public before BKV is able, or before BKV comes in, you know, with their proposal. They have the opportunity to see what, what someone else is doing and suggesting. Is that something that we can then do for Wilmer 10 after we've received the other proposal?
Councilmember Nelson.
The other thing that I, that I think about is, we didn't review the space. Do we really need, I mean, what are we doing? How, how, you know, the square footage, to me is, we haven't seen, what does that mean? So, you know, for me, I, I, I think there's just a question of, it, it's like building a house. You know, it's like, oh, I want this and I want this and I want this, but maybe we can't have it all. And maybe we shouldn't be having it all. You know, how are we going to pay for the, the support costs that are needed for the square footage and some of those things? And I actually asked Leslie to give us an update on the community center from a standpoint of income and expense and what would this do? I mean, we're still dealing with, with the event center and adding staff. And that wasn't built into the costs with the local option sales tax. So I think we have some more homework to do when we, you know, look at it to make sure we're being realistic with the square footage for what we need also.
I agree. I agree. Go ahead, Leslie.
That is, you know, as far as the square footage, you know, that's also part of, because we haven't sat down and we haven't designed what our, you know, we have our. because we haven't sat down and we haven't designed what our, you know, we have our facility needs information, but yes, do we really need all that? We don't know, because we haven't sat down until we pick out a site so that we can focus in on that site. We won't know what that can get down to as far as square footage. Because we have to have the site in order to know what we're gonna get down to, as, you know, sit down with staff. Okay, yes, we don't need that, yes, we don't need that. Do we need a full kitchen? We haven't answered that question, do we need, do, how big a full kitchen do we need? We can't answer that. You know, so these are all guesses right now. Bruce will, Mr. Schwartzman will be bringing a information to you as to, because the question was, in order to do this one package deal, we have to have an understanding to the public, what is the cost of that land? What is just the cost of the building? We don't know that. So then, we need to find those answers out yet. And if we're just going to stay with 52,000 square feet, well then we just stay with 52,000 square feet unless, but if you can add another 8,000, because that way you know from what Mr. Schwartzman presented, 60,000 square feet for brand new, 60,000 square feet for this building with an addition. So now you have those to compare to. Then he will also say just 52,000 square feet if we bid it out, what we might expect to have as that price. So, that, so you'll have the 52,000 and then you'll have the addition also, so it'll be all separate.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to the MB Rail Purchase Agreement, Aaron?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The packet that was sent out last week has an older version of the purchase agreement. From April 17th, when we had the closed session, there is a revised purchase agreement that was prepared by Robert Scott, the city attorney, and I, that was done last Monday, the 9th. So, in your packet, your revised packet, there are three items. There is the new revised commercial property purchase agreement. There is an executed early access agreement with the city of Wilmer. There is a development timeline, so larger projects, we spell out what we expect and when we expect to accomplish that. And in, and now turning to the purchase agreement, I'm also gonna mention that there are four exhibits toward the back, so just as a reference point. Exhibit A is legal description, exhibit B is preliminary survey, preliminary plat. Exhibit C is the project site plan, exhibit D is the Highway 40 improvements that are planned to enable this particular project. So let's walk through the purchase agreement at this point. And again, I should add that MB Rail is the entity that is interested in buying the 145 acres. They are in the process of creating a new entity that would be a, a, a new LLC, I believe, for this particular project. So that's why it says acquisition LLC. And then obviously, the two entities would be MB Rail and the city of Wilmer. All of the land is owned by, in this case, by the city of Wilmer. Going down to recitals, what we're talking about is 145 acres that is to the west of the FedEx facility. It is to the north of Highway 40, it is to the east of the Y. So as a point of reference, and you'll see some maps that you can refer to as well. The property would be sold as is, and so just to be clear on that. Moving down to the agreement and point number two, purchase price would be $8,000 per acre. And what that means is the total payment would be $1,160,000. And I have talked several times with Brian Miller, who is the CEO, and I said, okay, you're ready to go. If we can close in, at the latter part of June or early July, you're ready to go. And he said, yes. There'd be $10,000 of earnest money, obviously the balance would be paid at closing. Point number 4A, it's an important one to bring up as well, option to repurchase. So seller shall retain a conditional option to repurchase the property for a period of two years, two years, and from and after the closing date for an amount equivalent to the purchase price. This shall only vest upon buyer's failure to commence construction of an intermodal distribution center for primarily agricultural products. And construction is considered to be commenced upon the beginning of physical improvements beyond grading. So they need to perform, if they don't perform within two years, we can buy it back at that price. And it's good to have a little bit of, of, I think, clawback. We kind of ran into that, Leslie and I, before last fall, so I think, I think that's a good provision for us, 4A. Moving on to 4B, permanent easements. So there are several easements that have been, and you'll see them in the plat as we go through that. A permanent easement for utility and road right-of-ways, is, is, the, the road right-of-way is coming off of Highway 40. There is also a 40-foot easement for utility and, and that's for like water and sewer and that sort of thing, coming off of where Wilmer Avenue is. Kind of, if you remember where Magnum Trucking is, that is where the water and sewer ends today. So we will be extending it over to the new area. I've had discussions with John Heron about this and going like, okay, if you need a wider easement, now is the time to let me know. So, you know, we, we want to make sure we're in sync with WMU and the other departments. We removed from the earlier version that you would have seen in the packet, a right-of-way for public rail line and spur. So as part of this project, the rail, the spurs, would not be owned by the city of Wilmer, but would be privately owned, and I like that feature. We don't have to maintain it, you're just talking about parking lots and roads. Okay, I don't think you also want to be responsible for rail. These guys, that's what they do, that's their forte, is developing rail, maintaining it, interacting with customers. Okay, and then point number three at the top of the next page. Permanent easement for drainage purposes, 50 feet wide south of and parallel to the center line for county road ditch, commonly known as Hawk Creek. So, we want to make sure we're protecting the Hawk Creek drainage, and so what they can and cannot do, we were specifying how many feet they need to be away from Hawk Creek. And toward the middle of that page, restrictive covenants. Buyer shall not, and this is number two, C2, shall not erect structures on the property that would constitute an obstruction to air navigation as defined in Federal Aviation Regulations, Part 77. Part 77 indicates the height that we need to be depending on how close we are to the runway. As you know, the, the airport's two miles to the west. The maximum that we can have at this point is 150 feet. So that should handle most developments. The, the large cooperative that's looking at a project in addition to Nexus, they have some projects that go up 226 feet high. And so they understand they need to be 150 or less in this case. Yes?
If I could, on point number C3, I believe it is the creating a potential for attracting birds and other wildlife, so will they not have to have a holding pond? The one that's there already is sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I would say is that there will be a need for stormwater retention. We're talking a fairly large area, but in addition to that, if we're talking, talking large buildings, there's a fair amount of impervious surface. So if the buildings are the size of FedEx or larger, we need to handle stormwater and probably do so on a regional basis. I've had some discussions with Jared on that topic, and I've also talked to MB Rail about this, and I said, okay, Brian, here's the deal, we need a rating plan, but you also need to start thinking about a stormwater plan, and that may, or more, most likely will include a regional pond. The pond that you see there north of Dulies, that regional pond is part of, of the fourth addition. It handles that 90 acres there primarily going to the north. So, we can't load it up onto that pond.
My concern would be, you've seen the geese that congregate there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, to me, would constitute hazard airplanes if, in that flight there, I don't, how do you control that?
How do I control geese? That's a good question. No, we would have to have further discussions about that, but, you know, I think my suggestion is we look at the whole area. Maybe we have to look in some other areas. The city owns some land to the north, but I think my thought, and I'm not an expert on stormwater, but, but we should probably have a pond that's closer to Hawk Creek in some fashion, because it's gonna flow to the north. Okay, page four, seller's closing documents, quick claim deed, other affidavits and abstract, pretty typical. Buyer's contingency, the one I'll mention on the top of page five is buyer has obtained financing, that's what I was talking about before, or obtained funds sufficient. Brian indicates he's got a major investor in Kansas City that has done other projects, so I'm comfortable where they're at. Seller's contingency, the city planning commission shall review the sale and provide a recommendation. They have already met, and it was positive in terms of the planning commission, so we, we have their support for this project. Wilmer City Council shall pass an ordinance authorizing the sale of the property to buyer, that's where we're at right now. Okay, so moving on, I'm gonna skip over some of these pages here. And you can certainly ask questions, but now I'm gonna go to page 10. Page 10 of the development agreement. Part D, buyer shall have the right, an option, to extend the inspection due diligence period for two consecutive periods of 60 days each. They have repeatedly indicated to me that they would like to close as soon as possible, that they would like to start construction as soon as possible. We have a condensed timeline, as, as Leslie can, can vouch for. And so if the, the goal is to try to have construction in late summer, early fall here, I don't think they're gonna exercise this in terms of, of extending the diligence period. But if they do, they're gonna have to pay us more money. So, you know, there's, there's a provision in there for additional earnest money. All right, let's see here, moving on. Okay, miscellaneous, page 12. Now, miscellaneous is always kind of longer, you notice that? When you're talking about purchase agreements. Miscellaneous, 15A, seller shall be responsible for constructing roadway improvements to Highway 40 consisting of a, of a turn lanes as depicted in exhibit D. Now, obviously that is a highway, a state highway, 40. So, obviously, we will interface with, and Jared is certainly aware of this, we will interface, interface with District 8. They're aware of this project, I met with them in January and February. They have some advice for us, hopefully that advice doesn't cost us more money. But, but where we're at in that process, if you recollect, last fall, we were successful in getting 900,000 approved by the state for TED money, Transportation Economic Development, for those improvements. What did we propose? We proposed a turn lane going west into the, into the, that area of the park, and then an acceleration lane before you get to the bridge over, over the Y. They came back and said, you know, we would like you to consider an alternative to this, and that is a middle turn lane, and then you've got through lanes on either side. And that way, if you do have something to the south, because the city does own, own land to the south of 40, closer to the, to the large, I won't say lake, but pond that is closer to 55 there. Well, then we're more prepared for that, so. Let's see here, and then at this point, I think Bolton and Mank is getting closer to doing an apple versus apple comparison, right, Jared? Yes, he's nodding, okay. So, 15, Part B, seller shall extend public water and sanitary sewer services, that's why I was talking about that 40-foot easement from where Magnum Trucking is, to the boundary of the property. So I'm not gonna be worrying so much inside the property, but to the boundary. So that's a big area inside the 145 acres, and I'm saying, you know what? That's your responsibility to extend it into, into that area, to the different buildings. The cost of such an extension shall be shared equally between buyer and seller. That is, if it costs 500,000, their, their portion of that is 250,000. And I've not gotten any pushback on that. Our 250 could come from land sale proceeds, for example. 15C is a new provision from what was in the packet that was sent out last week. 15C refers to Magellan, the Magellan easement. So the Magellan easement, if, if you've looked at, say, this map, basically, it's in the southwest corner, it's going from crossing 55, and it is going and crossing underneath 40. Now, I think this is important for the city council to consider here, because we have an opportunity to get something done at no cost to us, which is always good. Seller shall cooperate with the buyer's efforts to confine the geographic coverage of that certain Magellan easement. So they've had an easement there at that location since, since 1946. But, it is a blanket easement, it covers a big area. We want them to confine the easement to a small area, so they don't restrict what can happen in the rail park. The good news is that they've recently contacted us and said that they would be willing, at their cost, to survey that area and confine the easement. They have an interest in making sure we don't hit their pipeline, or that we don't go too low. We need to make sure that elevations are really protecting the, the pipeline there, all right? So, my advice is that we should, as a city, move ahead with that process. They've expressed a willingness to confine the easement, and I think we should take them up on that. All right, at the bottom is the signatures on page 12. I'm gonna skip down the road here. You can see that Brian has signed on page 15. Now, this is the legalese that Robert Scott has come up with, it goes for two pages, so it's, it's pretty detailed. I'm not going through this, Robert. So, so anyway, you can see the, the legal description. Exhibit B, this is the, you can kind of see the survey there. And then you can go, kind of see the preliminary plat with the legal description, and adding the topography. Exhibit C is the rail plan, a, a larger copy of the rail plan. I can tell you that this Friday, the 19th, there is going to be a meeting of MB Rail, the Nexus folks, and BNSF in Fort Worth, and this will be the topic. This project will be the topic. So, I give credit to MB Rail. As you know, it's not always easy dealing with the railroad. And they have had multiple conversations with BNSF. You know, I've been saying for the last year that, you know, we'll design this the way it's supposed to meet the BNSF, and kind of, it just got lost in space or something, I don't know, with BNSF. But BNSF has had the same conversations, that they will manage this site, BNSF doesn't have to bring the trains in, they will manage the, the train, the, the cars inside this. And BNSF said, okay, that's good, I've been saying this for a while. So that's good, that I think they, that BNSF is agreeable to what is being proposed. And then the last thing, exhibit D is the current layout for the Highway 40 improvements. And then the last thing, Exhibit D is the current layout for the Highway 40 improvements. So the early access agreement was executed a couple of days ago. So they do have the ability to do investigations as needed. And then lastly, the other thing I was mentioning was the development timeline. So this is my seventh version of this, and so it has been modified a few times. So any questions on the purchase agreement?
Doesn't look like it.
Sorry.
You've done a fabulous job, Aaron. Incredible.
Thank you.
So what we're looking for is a motion.
I'll make a motion to set June 5th as the public hearing date for the land sale. Second.
And Mayor and Council, if I could recommend, the motion also be to introduce the ordinance authorizing the land sale and set the public hearing.
Are they two separate?
It's all one motion.
Okay, then I would include that.
All right, you're okay?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right. That is a simple motion. But you need to vote.
Yep.
Mayor, Council, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're not sure if the motion included the date of the public hearing, and we'd recommend that be included.
I did say June 5th, 2000. I didn't say 2023, but I'll include that now. But I did say June 5th.
Thank you.
I assume everybody's voting.
You what? Not yet?
Oh, something happened.
Uh-oh. Did you just come up? I didn't get one. I don't know.
At least it's not us.
Did you vote?
We could do a voice vote for Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. All right, Aaron, are you handling the BNSF certification?
I am. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In December, the EDC was approached by BNSF Railway, who invited the city of Wilmer to participate in its site certification process. Now, you may recall that I worked on a shovel-ready certification with DEED, that is, the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, for the fourth edition of the Wilmer Industrial Park, beginning in March of 2016. So I was one week here, and I said, we need to do a shovel-ready site. So this is what I was working on in the spring of 2016. Getting all the materials needed for that shovel-ready certification. The cost for that was $13,160 in my time. I think that effort was well worth it, given FedEx, Magnum Trucking, and other projects that are there now. The BNSF certification is more selective, more selective than DEED. There are only 33 certified sites in North America that are BNSF certified. Some states have none. Minnesota has only one other certified site in Becker. I have done recently analysis of all 33 of those sites, getting information on every single one of them. And even, I've even ranked them as well, from my standpoint. I believe we stack up well against those other communities in terms of infrastructure, site configuration, site acreage, potential prospects, targeted industries, et cetera, et cetera. Since December of 2022, the EDC has been working with BNSF staff and Global Location Strategies, GLS. They are a South Carolina site selector hired by BNSF to do due diligence on us and to help us complete the certification process. Now, the proposed certification area involves 335 acres, contiguous acres within the Wilmer Industrial Park and former airport site. The area is bounded by the new US Highway 12 on the north side, County Road 55 on the west, so it has both land, including where MB Rail would be, but also to the west of the Y as well, that the city owns. On the south, it is mostly north of the Minnesota Highway 40, and on the east, mostly west of WMU's 69 KV overhead power line. In order to be considered, sites must undergo a thorough analysis, which includes an evaluation of environmental and geotechnical standards, available utilities, site availability, and existing and proposed infrastructure. The DEED certification questionnaire was four pages. The BNSF questionnaire has a rather intense 391 questions, many quite detailed, like how many minutes will it take the ambulance to go from where it is today to over to the site? Go. Or if you have a need for 5 megawatts of power at this location, is it available? When is it available? How much would it cost, et cetera, et cetera? BNSF Site Certification Program creates value for business prospects and site selectors and so forth, who are seeking a rail-served industrial site by accelerating the process required for economic development. Time is money. A customer who builds a new rail-served facility at one of these sites is expected to save six to nine months of time as a result of this program. So what are the costs? Attached in your packet was a quote from Braun Intertech. They have been involved with a number of projects lately, including the demolition of the power plant, for instance. That's for a geotechnical evaluation and a map showing, I have a map showing where those are. So this is the site certification area that encompasses 335 acres. I can tell you that, for instance, BNSF did not want to go north of Highway 12, the new Highway 12. They did not want to go past, for example, County Road 5. They just said, this is the area that we're interested in. Okay. So we have that quote for 12 soil borings, and I've identified where I want those 12 borings. So we are not doing a grid pattern. So when you have a large project like FedEx, they are going to do a grid pattern every so many feet for soil borings. I don't need that. I just need representative soil borings in specific areas. So I have an rough idea of what the soil types are, how the conditions are, where's the water, and so forth. You'll notice there's kind of open area to the west, closer to the Y. That is because the agricultural group that's looking at the project on the west side of the rail park has already done soil borings over there. We also have a quote from Bonham and Ronkey Stern for an ALTA survey, which is basically a specialized boundary survey for 7,500. A quote from Glacial Lakes Environmental Consulting for a Phase 1 assessment for 2,850. An invoice from Bonham and Ronkey Stern for rail survey easements, because I need to know where those easements are, and I had to get those done right away, so I already have an invoice from them. 2196, and a quote from Candy Ojai Abstract for title commitment of 12,900. That is based on the number of parcels in the certification area, and there are 43 parcels, so it adds up. Grand total, $38,021. This, of course, is a much larger area than what we were dealing with back in 2016, when I was dealing with the fourth edition. This process usually takes about one year to complete with BNSF. I want to get it done in six months, and I would like to get it done this summer. I think it's doable. I'd have to push a few people, but I think I would like to finish it at a faster clip. While it is still relatively early in the planting season, and the weather has now turned nice, finally, I would highly recommend that the Wilmer City Council approve moving ahead with these activities. I believe this information will be a useful and good investment for the city. And I would stand for any questions.
Carl. What did you just say? What are we looking at? What, simply?
Right. I'm looking for a little over $38,000 that would come from the Wilmer Industrial Park. The balance of the industrial park fund is around 1.2 million. Once we close on the sale of the property, we'll have about 2.4 million in that fund. I'm just asking for 1.5%.
And what will this do, this certification?
And what this certification will do is tell prospects that we're prepared for you. We have, here's some information. So when FedEx came, and they say, do you have any soil borings? Here they are. Have you had a Phase 1? I just sent out a Phase 1 this week to somebody. Here it is. Do you have title, clear title? Does the city actually own this land?
Thank you.
Any other?
Okay, you just, you just.
I can.
Drop that into where the motion's going to be here.
It's a resolution we need to introduce.
You can't, once you put the vote thing down, you can't move it on our screen.
I would make a motion.
I'll make, okay, I was there.
To adopt, motion approving the expenditure of $38,021 from the Wilmer Industrial Park Fund for the Candyway County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission to undertake geotechnical ALTA survey, Phase 1 environmental assessment, easement delineation, and title commitment activities.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second.
I don't know.
Discussion? Roll call. Oh.
Did you show up that time?
Aaron, you don't fish.
Do I fish? What?
You don't fish, do you?
I'm busy with.
That's my point.
We do a voice vote for Davis?
Yes.
It would be eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Job well done again.
This is exciting, exciting stuff. I don't know if people understand the magnitude of what this does. And I'd say it's 20 years in the making, from having purchased that land to what you did in 2016, to what's going on now. This is incredible.
And moving the airport, and when we moved the airport three miles out, I thought, boy, that's a long ways. Now we're talking about birds maybe. Problems.
Right, you know, if you look at the certified sites that are the top performers, so when I reviewed them, there were like, what I consider like, nine of them that were high performance. They have done multiple projects. They have done their infrastructure. They have, in fact, they're already starting to think about Phase 2, Phase 2 and Phase 3. They're on their game. They know what they're doing. And typically, you have to have over $100 million, in my book, to make that top tier. I think we're just as good as that top tier. I really do.
Thank you, Aaron. Again, job well done. Gary, you're going to talk to us about a resolution for 19th Avenue Path Professional Services Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Time before you to ask you to adopt the resolution entering a professional service agreement with Bolton and Mank for the design and construction of Trail 19th Avenue, along South Side, 19th Avenue. This city was awarded a $500,000 grant in transportation funds for the construction of 1.25 miles of 10-foot, multi-use trail along 19th Avenue from 15th Street to 5th Street Southeast. And most of you are probably where the trail stopped right now at 15th Street Southwest. So this goes from that point to basically to Walmart, and then that ties into the other trail there at Walmart.
All right, I would make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
A motion, a second, discussion? They're being done. Roll call. Thank you, Gary.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Thank you. Next, Jonah, you're going to talk to us about a computer use policy.
Good evening, everybody. Before you for approval is a written computer use policy. We had to do a complete rewrite of the policy since the current one was last updated in 2003. As you can imagine, technology and the use of it in the city has changed just a little bit since then, prompting the rewrite. Here to answer any questions you may have on it.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended computer use policy.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, discussion? Justin?
Just a quick comment, because I feel like this is maybe the second time this has happened. So not just for you, Jonah, obviously, but for others as well. Like, I would prefer to get like a redlined version of these, where we can go through and clearly tell what the changes have been. Maybe that doesn't work sometimes when it's so substantial, but.
You did receive the current policy, and this is a complete rewrite of the computer policy. That's why in your packet you had a watermark that said current policy. That, and then this, because this was so detailed, that's why we did it that way, because we really didn't.
Would be too much red.
We couldn't do a red line, because it pretty much would have been all red lined.
Thank you.
All right.
Just a question. I'm assuming that we'll be asked to sign on the line for this once we approve it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This is just a motion.
Just a clarification. We did get two different votes on that.
Did?
I had voted. And then it popped up again.
We'll reset it, and everybody will have to vote again.
Okay.
What's that?
No, it's here. Eight ayes, zero nays. Just my computer did a blink, so it must have cut you out, so.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Jonah. Next, Leslie, you're going to lead us through this general wage increase.
Yes, it's pretty simple. Two weeks ago, you know, we had approved the LELS wage contract at 4% for 2023, 4% for 2024, and 3% for 2025. This is just the unrepresented personnel, so this just includes directors and some of our staff that is unrepresented, such as the city clerk and such. And so we're just going to, this is just a 4% increase for 2023, and we are not talking about 2024, 2025 for our unrepresented. It's just one year increase of the wage scale from 2022 to 2023 for 4%.
Okay, this is a resolution.
I move to accept the.
You're going to introduce the resolution?
I introduce the resolution.
Second. Okay, we got a motion to accept and. Okay, we got a motion to accept, and second. Any questions? Seems funny, gets quiet.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
You, you got it? Okay, that passes. All right. Community pride. I know, Mike, well, Brian, you have a.
I think Julie kind of covered it before I had a chance. Did you talk about the, I wasn't listening to the whole thing, because I was doing some other things over here, but can you talk also about the APPA as well?
Nope, I'll let you do that.
All right.
WMU was recognized by the APPA for Revival Electrical Service in 2022. Staff electrical engineer Smith announced that Wilmer Utilities.
I did cover that.
You did?
Yeah, their Diamond Award.
No.
Oh, this is so different.
Yeah, this is different.
Okay, sorry.
This is, they only had 24 minutes per year, per person of outage. That's what they got the award for. That's amazing. So, that's, that's it.
All right. Anything else come before the council? If not, we're adjourned.